I'd like to call the October Pecosa City School Board meeting to order. Jamie?
Jonah Easley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jonah is a 7th grader at Pecosa Middle School. Jonah is a member of the K Team and the World Music Drumming Club at the Pecosa Middle School. He also participates in Boy Scouts and is a member of Troop 28, having earned the rank of Tenderfoot. In his free time, Jonah enjoys playing basketball, singing, and playing the baritone saxophone. After graduating from high school, Jonah would like to attend Virginia Tech and is currently exploring various career options.
Join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Taylor Jones will provide the inspirational reading. Taylor is an 8th grade student at Pecosa Middle School. She is the Treasurer of K Team and a member of the National Honor Society at the Pecosa Middle School. Pecosa plays travel softball for the Virginia Legends. After graduating high school, Taylor plans to attend either Duke or the College of William and Mary to pursue a career as a marine biologist.
Remember, there is no such thing as a small act of kindness. Every act creates a ripple with no logical end. Scott Adams. Pecosa Middle School focuses on four main citizenship characteristics: respect, citizenship, kindness, and trustworthiness. As a diverse school that strives to get students to where they need to go for all aspects of life, not only do these traits create a goal for students to reach for, but they set a safe environment for all. Respect is demonstrated at the school by the teachers and the students working together to listen actively, be helpful, and respecting others' opinions. Citizenship is established by following the rules at the school and the community, being a good person, and taking care of the environment. Pecosa Middle School reveals kindness by smiling, working hard, paying attention, and volunteering in clubs. Trustworthiness is displayed by telling the truth, being sincere, remaining reliable, and keeping your word. The students work hard and the teachers drive students forward not only in education but in these four main characteristics: respect, citizenship, kindness, and trustworthiness. The four traits that the world struggles with, but the four traits that Pecosa students learn and gain. I'm proud to be a student here because not only do I feel safe, but I feel pushed to be a better student and a better citizenship and a better citizen of the world. Bull Island stands for many things, but Pecosa Middle School stands for their students' success and character. Pecosa Middle School is starting a different view for the next generation, and I'm proud to be an individual that is a part of this generational change. Do things for people, not because of who they are or what they do in return, but because of who you are. Harold Kushner.
Next, we have student presentations, and joining us from Pecosa Middle School are four students who are here to share with you what it means to go all in. Students are Mackenzie Titko, Zachary Price, Sophia Debe, Shion Walker, and the teachers are Amanda Goen and Stacy Tuttle.
Hi, I'm Shion Walker.
Hi, I'm Sophia Debe.
Hello, I'm Mackenzie Titko.
Hi, I'm Zachary Price.
And we're All In!
All In is part of Pecosa Middle School's bully prevention effort.
All In encourages students to make good choices and focuses on a new character trait each quarter.
All In activities include golden tickets for demonstrating the character trait of the quarter, and inspirational quotes on the morning announcements, and the very popular All In videos.
Speaking of videos, we'd like to share a few highlights from last year's videos and this year's premiere. The video also features a few students and teachers talking about what All In means to them.
You've seen the word, maybe you've heard the talk, but what does it mean to go all in? All In is a movement inspired by the understanding that creating a safe and caring learning environment requires that we are all invested, all involved, all interested, and all in our school, our community, and each other because we are all in this together.
To go all in, it means like helping people when they need it, being trustworthy to your friends, and like being respectful and nice to like the teachers and your fellow students.
I love the All In video, and I love the idea that we have this program for all the students to make sure that everyone is participating, everyone is being taken care of, and I love the creativity and the excitement that I hear and see with the students for this All In program. I'm looking forward to a great year with All In.
I like the All In videos because they're cheesy and they make me laugh, but they still send a good message about being respectful and kind to others.
The All In video is good because it really helps the school teach the new kids what we're all about and how we're helping and encouraging to everyone.
Um, I like the All In videos because it encourages people to make the school a better place.
Uh, I like the All In videos because I think they have a good message.
Hi, I'm Christina Dudley. I am a Spanish and local teacher here at Pecosa Middle. I am so impressed with the All In. We join all together and focus on certain character traits that are not just life skills but are also community building. And the students, they love the videos that they make, they're very inspiring. And then as a teacher, it's a lot of fun to give these tickets to the students and say, "Oh, I caught you, I caught you being awesome, I caught you doing this character trait." And it's just really positive and team building and character building for our school.
Last year, students, teachers, other members of our community, and even our very own superhero committed themselves to going all in. Now let's take a look back at all the fun we had last year going all in.
Stop right there, citizens! What is this? Who made all this mess? Someone else to clean up! Someone needs to take responsibility for their actions!
It was me. I made most of the mess, and well, I guess I should be the one to clean it up.
Very own superhero. But do you think we'll ever see him again?
That is right! It is I, Captain Responsible, and I have some words I would like to share to all the students at Pecosa Middle School. Welcome, everybody, to the All In Avengers staff meeting. Before we start, I would like to take a roll call. Citizen Rex. Okay.
So now it's time to show everyone just what's possible when we're all in together and kindness takes the lead.
Let's meet this year's All In Avengers.
And we had a lot of fun doing it, but we want to invite all of you to go all in as well, so we'd like to present you with these All In bracelets.
Thank you all very much, and if you'll stick around for just a few minutes, we're gonna take an intermission so that we can come out and speak with you. Next up, we have recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, the first recognition we'll do this evening is the Senior of the Month, so as Dr. Carter makes his way to the podium, I'd ask that Bailey Green come forward, please.
Bailey is the Pecosa High School October Student of the Month. He's an outstanding young man who excels in academics, athletics, and civic engagement. As a freshman, he set his sights on attending one of the US Military Academies or a University ROTC program, and to that end, he has challenged himself academically with a number of honors and AP courses. He's a member of the National Honor Society and Mu Alpha Theta and has represented PHS at Boy State. Athletically, he's been a member of the varsity football and baseball team since 9th grade and currently serves as a team captain for both. He has earned many accolades for his on-field performance, most recently being named as the Buffalo Wild Wings Player of the Week for the second time in his high school career. During his sophomore year, he decided to give winter track a try during his offseason and is now a two-time state qualifier in the 55-meter dash. Outside of school, Bailey has volunteered numerous hours coaching Little League baseball, tutoring young students at the primary school, and supervising sports camps. This past summer, he met with the administration both at Pecosa High School and at the primary school in order to develop a mentoring program for young boys who may lack a positive male influence in their lives. Upon graduation, he hopes to obtain a degree in finance. Please join me congratulating Bailey Green for being this month's Senior of the Month. And now we'd like to recognize our Volunteer of the Month. If Giselle Ingram could please come forward.
Mrs. Ingram is currently serving as the PMS PTO Vice President. Last year, she served as the PMS PTO Volunteer Coordinator. She organizes volunteers and parent support for numerous activities at the middle school. She oversees membership and chaperone dances. Mrs. Ingram's support of the school division extends beyond PMS as she is an active member of the PHS PTO, currently serving as the after-prom correspondence chair. Mrs. Ingram is also active with agencies outside of school. She is the Education Chair for the Pecosas Women's Club, a volunteer coach for Pecosa, Parks and Rec, and a member of Tabernacle United Methodist Church. Mrs. Ingram's dedication to Pecosa Middle School is evident by her continuous efforts to support school-sponsored activities. Her leadership skills, positive attitude, and willingness to help are just a few of the characteristics that make her a valuable asset at Pecosa Middle School. Please join me congratulating Giselle Ingram on being the Volunteer of the Month and thank her for her work. Next, we'd like to award the Purple Star Award, so I'd ask that Dr. Syak, Principal of the High School, come forward, as well as Tammy Edwards, who is our Langley U.S. Military School Liaison. The Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity of Military Children has selected Pecosa High School as the 2019 Purple Star Designee. The Virginia Purple Star designation is awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. To qualify to be a Virginia Purple Star school, the school must complete a rigorous application process, providing information on how the school supports military students and their families. Some of the qualifications are to provide parents with information on enrollment and registration information as the military families arrive in Pecosa, to provide academic planning for military families, to provide information about programs for military students with special needs, provide other information of importance to military families to include information about Impact Aid, the PTO, extracurricular activities, and local community sport. Also, they must provide a student-led transition program with peer support for military students. PHS calls this program S2S. And they also are required to hold a military recognition event. I'm sure many of you are aware of the Veterans Project that occurs annually at our high school now. Please join me in congratulating Pecosa High School for meeting these qualifications and for being selected as a Virginia Purple Star recipient. And a thank you to Ms. Edwards for coming out to see us tonight on her day off, so thank you for coming. She's a wonderful support for us.
And now we'll take that break so we can meet with you. Okay, next we have presentations and reports. First up is financial update with Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the School Board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I want to review the Impact Aid program with you. Impact Aid is one of the federal funding sources that are included in our budget. As you know, Impact Aid is a US Department of Education program that provides financial assistance to local school divisions to compensate for lost local revenue due to tax-exempt federal property or increased expenditures for federally-connected children. PCPS receives basic support payments for federally-connected children, which are those students whose parents or legal guardians are either active-duty military or work on federal property, which includes persons employed by a contractor, subcontractor, or other private business. Impact Aid funding is distributed based on the percentage of a school division's federally-connected population, and the funding becomes part of our general operating budget and supports instructional activities for all students. Based on last year's survey, PCPS had 583 federally-connected students, which was about 27% of the total student enrollment. As you can see, active-duty military accounts for about 51%, and those students whose parents or guardians work on federal property accounts for the remaining 49%. We are required to compile information and report annually by January to support funding for the following fiscal year. Therefore, in order to determine eligibility for students enrolled in our schools, an annual Impact Aid survey form is sent home with each child. This form will be sent home on Wednesday, October 16th. And Impact Aid does require a separate form for each student, and the form should be completed and returned to the student's school as soon as possible, but no later than Wednesday, October 23rd. We really appreciate everyone taking the time to complete these forms to assist us in our efforts to secure this federal funding for our schools. And that concludes my report.
You have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Next is operations update with Mr. Papas and an update on the PMS Modernization Project.
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Carter, Dr. Parrish. In compliance with the federal government regulations, free and reduced meal benefits are extended to students who in the previous year, the 18-19 school year, received those benefits. Those benefits are automatically continued for the first 30 days of the subsequent year, which is now. Those benefits expired actually effective today, October 14th, which is the last day for the automatic extension of the 2018-2019 benefits. While the grace period has concluded, families are encouraged to apply for benefits at any time during the school year. PHS added a salad bar to the high school offerings that should be very well-received by both faculty and students, as well as staff. It includes a delicious spring mix of vegetables with baby spinach, cauliflower, broccoli, shredded carrots, a myriad of other things, and offers five different protein choices to top off the salad. Last week, as you may know, tides were quite high, and the Transportation Department sent out several robo-calls informing homes of students in low-lying areas that we anticipated to have difficulty either getting to or dropping students off on those days. The message reminded folks that buses do not cross roads that are covered with water. However, it explained that students are welcome to catch the bus or we would drop them off at the nearest available stop. Additionally, it went on to explain to parents living in these impacted areas that their student would be excused for a tardy or an absence based on their inability to get to school due to the high water. PCPS Maintenance is nearing completion of installing a high-efficiency boiler at the primary school. The boiler that was replaced was put in in 1989. That's 30 years old. The boiler that we put in was made in 2011. We received it from a nearby school division that was completely revamping their HVAC. They surplused it, we got it, and we are now the benefactor of that happening. In the PMS project, the webpage has been updated with the most accurate timeline. Construction work is to begin early next fall, so we have the summer to prepare for the movement of students to both PES and PHS. There is a new video of an auditoria that we visited on the project webpage. We hope to include one at PMS, and that if we do so, it will meet the needs for performance space for all of our schools. And that concludes my operations report.
A comment that I watched the middle school video, and it was excellent, you know, good automation, et cetera, but showing off what the cafeteria auditorium could possibly look like, and I think it's, I would encourage those who are not here to watch that video because it's different than what you may have thought about auditorium and cafeteria put together in one.
It's impressive.
I also wanted to thank for the robo-call that went out to the low-lying areas. I know it helped answer a number of questions for existing parents of students within our school division, so that was very helpful. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. And last up, instructional update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Scheeler, members of the Board, and Dr. Parrish. My instructional update this evening continues our fall data review to include accreditation and graduation data. It's now official, all PCPS schools have met the state's accreditation standards, once again, so we are very excited about that. If you recall, accreditation is determined by measures in three areas called school quality indicators. These indicators are student achievement in the areas of English reading and writing, math, and science. Social studies is no longer included as a measure in this rating, but it's still assessed each year. Achievement gaps among students will be measured in English and mathematics for white, black, Asian, Hispanic students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and our English learners. Student engagement is measured by looking at the absenteeism at each school for all grade levels, the graduation and completion rates, and the college, career, and civic readiness levels for students at the high school level. And if you recall, we went over this with the new system last year. For each of these areas, student achievement, achievement gaps, and student engagement, schools will be scored at one of three levels. Level one, or green, has the school scoring at or above standards for the indicator. Level two, or yellow, has the school scoring below the standard for the indicator but approaching a level-one performance. And level three, or red, has the school scoring below the standard for the indicator. And a combination of these performance levels determines each school's and the division's For the school quality index indicators for 2019, you can see that each school has achieved a level-one rating. When combined, this means that each school has earned full accreditation, and just as a reminder, the primary school's accreditation is attached to the elementary school's accreditation. A student is considered chronically absent when he or she misses 10% of the school year. In Pecosa, that equates to 18 school days. These absences for students can be excused or unexcused. In 2019, the primary school and the elementary school had 5.2% of their students who met this definition of being chronically absent. At the middle school, the rate was 7.2%, and at the high school, that rate was 6%. Managing attendance is a team effort with the school, the student, and the family working Our on-time graduation rates reflect the number of students who completed high school in four years, and they do not include students who completed a GED or students who might still be enrolled. Pecosa High School has an on-time graduation rate of 92.2% for the 2019 school year, and you can see that this is just above the state average of 91.5%. Our dropout rate in 2019 was 2.2%, which is just under, well under, the state dropout rate of 5.6%. In terms of diplomas, for the class of 2019, 60% of our students earned an advanced studies diploma, and 40% of our students earned a standard diploma. An advanced diploma is earned when a student earns 26 course credits, and a standard diploma is received when a student earns 22 course credits. Students also have to earn a prescribed number of verified credits, which is earned Students also have to earn a prescribed number of verified credits, which is earned when a student passes an end-of-course SOL assessment. And finally tonight, just a few calendar reminders for parents and students. Monday, November 4th is the end of the first quarter, with Tuesday, November 5th being a student holiday which is serving for parent and student, or excuse me, parent and teacher conferences. The second quarter begins on Wednesday, November 6th. Monday, November 11th will be an early dismissal day for students, providing additional time for parent-teacher conferences. This concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Comments there?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Public Comment, and Pecosin School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School Board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The School Board will not hear a public comment that involves an individual student-related matter that is disclosure of which violates applicable confidentiality requirements. School Board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire School Board and not to one individual board member nor to the superintendent, a staff member, nor the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and the time allotted for speakers' policy is three minutes. Ms. Reimers?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers first up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. She said, "My name is David Phillips. I don't live in your community, but I have a son that goes to school here, junior in your high school." My son was one of the young men who was involved in the incident that happened with the video. I think we all know social media is probably not our friends. I don't think, anyone sitting here, had it happened to us, I'd be graduating the class of 2020 back then. So I made numerous attempts to contact different people when this started. The only person I actually got to speak to was an assistant principal at Pecosin High School in the beginning. I was made aware that you people have never been told these kids were punished four times. Not once, twice, four times. The punishment was one thing on a Monday, something else on a Tuesday, something else on Wednesday, and on Friday, the total action, which y'all had your little private meeting, I think on Thursday night. I was told at the school on Thursday that it was over with, asked for a letter of that effect, which I never received. I did receive a letter, but it didn't state what I asked for. And I'll try to keep this as sweet as I possibly can under the circumstances. I talked with the superintendent of, well, I didn't talk to the assistant superintendent of schools. I couldn't get the superintendent of schools until after this was over, and then she finally had time to speak to me. I've never met, or to my knowledge, other than listened to a conversation they had with my son, spoken to the principal of Pecosin High School. But I was told in some writing that I received, she made quite an accusation that I made some derogatory remarks about her, which I didn't. I kept getting questioned if I was recording something, so I guess I know why, because if I recorded, it's a little hard to say I said something that I didn't. This has turned into a mess that's just going to get worse. I talked with the chairman of your School Board, who was courteous enough to call me and called me back again the following week after he did some research. And he was basically told the same thing I was told. I was told by the superintendent that we're doing an investigation, which I requested a copy of in writing that I, to this day, have not received. An investigation, to y'all, I'm sure it's the same thing as it is to me, you talk to everyone involved. I don't think that's happened. Actually, I know it hasn't happened. And I'm still waiting on a copy of that. I have on numerous occasions brought it to the attention of the school. My son never made a racial statement, period. It states in the paperwork that he does, but he doesn't. If any of y'all have watched the videos, he's listening to someone else say something, runs up, says something I don't approve of, however, it's not racist. But he's been branded as racist in his community. And I think your school system has responded to public media. You don't have four different sentencing. The first day was what they thought was right, then they got a little flack, and then when it really got bad and it got in the newspaper, gee, we got to do something really bad, because this is coming down on the city of Pecosin. Unfortunately, Pecosin's had a pretty bad reputation as long as I've been here, and I've been here 65 years. I think if you watched your news reports, it was more about Pecosin than what these kids did. I requested that my son's sentence be changed. I have furnished paperwork on this, have him go into court on numerous occasions, and what I'm saying be correct, I think they still teach the Constitution in school, I don't know, but if they do, the First Amendment's freedom of speech.
Phillips, I'm going to have to go ahead and wrap up, sir.
Okay. I think everybody got my point.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ms. Reimers?
I thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming out.
Public speaking is probably one of my greatest fears, so please bear with me. I am the mother of Connor, the student he was just referring to. This has been one of the most difficult events, I think, that we have ever faced in his 16 years of life. It continues to this day. We had a very difficult weekend, because I don't think you realize that when you strip an athlete of their sport or what they identify with, the psychological piece that goes along with that. Friday night was kind of, it was tearful, it was tough. As Connor explained it to me, his teammates are just as much his family as his real family is. That is a brotherhood, it is something that is very, very meaningful. And I don't think that when the 45-day social probation was issued, I don't think that that piece was taken into well enough thought. In nursing school, I was taught that it has been researched and proven that when you have a student that's struggling, when you take their sports and stuff away, and it's actually been found by research that it actually, they further go down, it is best to keep them in their sports and their things that they do identify with. In getting the paperwork that was sent to us, it was not what we asked for completely, but what we were given was the history of the notes, because I had requested it, and I was very disappointed. There's been times when I've spoken with the assistant principal there, and I've shared my concerns, but I found that these notes only reflect a very small portion of the conversation, and many of them didn't have any notation of my concerns at all. And that's disturbing. Who are we representing? Are we representing you, the School Board, so that you don't get in trouble, or are we truly representing the students? I think the school system here is the reason why a lot of folks moved here. It's one of the big selling points of Pecosin, but after this whole dilemma and digging deeper into things that I would have never thought to dig into, very disturbed and extremely disappointed. Sad.
All right. Did I take, I thought it had gone off. Do you have anything else, Ms. Wainwright? My apologies, I thought that was, okay. Do we have other?
Yes, sir. We have one more, Mr. Jay Long.
L N G. Reimers still sat on 11.
Name's Jay Long. My son was also involved in the incident with the video. Oh, I just sent that.
Hang on a second. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, she'll restart.
Just to follow up on a few of the things, you know, kind of one of my concerns about this, neither four of those students took the video on their phone or was on their phone. Yes, they were talking into a phone, and they knew the video was on the phone, they thought it would have been deleted. And my concern, you know, this is my last kid I have in public schools, and you know, they'll go on, but you know, my concern is weaponization of social media to use against other students. And you know, this is a big concern. I mean, how do you know when a kid's out somewhere and they get, you know, they did, there was no intent. This video did not get to social media by anybody's intent to harm, to damage, to do anything. It was a bunch of dumb kids standing, you know, sitting around saying dumb things. And we've all done it, we've all, you know, unfortunately, in this, you know, era, you know, we, you know, we're smart enough, they're not, they're kids, they're kids. I mean, they, none of these kids are even 18. They don't even have rights yet. Actually, they do have rights, excuse me, they do have rights. They do have, and they have First Amendment rights, and they do have freedom of speech rights. And I don't think they broke any freedom of speech rights. They may have said some things that people, you know, feel are hateful, but they're not, there's still freedom of speech. Hate speech is directed towards an individual or a group. This wasn't directed towards, this was kids sitting around saying stuff. And you know, that's my concern. Just like they said, you know, their punishment, or their sentence, or whatever you want to call it, I don't think fit the crime. Yes, things should have been done. I mean, where was any type of sensitivity training? I mean, do any of these kids know what they did was wrong? I mean, we as parents try to tell them that, but you know, is the school system doing anything about this? Another incident's happened, I think last week, with a football team at a school in Virginia. First thing, they came out to the media and said, "We're doing sensitivity training. We're talking to these kids." I mean, first thing it was told us was, "Look, we're going to suspend them, we're worried about their safety." And then I was told, it was a financial burden on the school, what my kid did. And I have that in a letter. And then it was a major campus eruption, kids were worried for their life. Well, my son did have a death threat on him, and the Commonwealth Attorney will not prosecute it, so I don't guess it was, you know, much of a death threat. So, you know, my concern is going forward, I mean, I know the Supreme Court has a lot of work to do on social media and kids in high schools and all this, from what I've read and what we've talked to with attorneys, but you know, something needs to be done at this age group with these kids, so this does not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Long. Appreciate each of you coming out to share your concerns with us. Ms. Sheeler?
Yes, sir. To the consent agenda. Yes, the consent agenda will include the approval of the minutes of September's regular meeting and work session, the approval of minutes of closed session held on September 12th, the approval of financial reports, the approval of personnel action, the approval of superintendent's personnel action, and the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with the attached request.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. And do I have a second? Second. Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Trautman?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Matters for consideration, first up is consideration of approval of the PCPS Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year '21. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I've put over here on the screen the copy of proposed capital improvement plan. This is what we talked about in your last work session, but for the sake of those who also may be watching on TV, they're able to see it here. What I want to talk a little bit about here is what has occurred in terms of funding for the primary school roof as well as the high school roof. As Board members remember, when the city was able to provide us funding for the middle school project, they also were able to provide us funding to assist with the roof work that needs to be done at the primary and high school, and that was about $2.45 million. What we were able to do this past year is bring in roofing experts to study the roof to determine exactly what we needed to do with the roof to ensure that we would have longevity of the roof for many years to come. And what we are able to do for some of the roofing is actually to resurface it rather than completely taking it off and replacing it. So that's actually brought down the cost of the roof work that will be done on the primary and high school, and we'll see a savings there of $700,000. So what we're showing here on this plan is for us then to put that $700,000 into the middle school project, so it will increase the money available for the middle school project by another $700,000, so now we'd be at $17,700,000. And that will be very helpful to that project, because every we do every dime we can get into that project we need to do at this point, so we're continuing to look for ways to do it. So that roof work, again, reminder, the funding is there to do it, so we anticipate that we'll begin doing that work this year and through next summer and get that done on those two schools. Also, down below, you see bus replacements. Part of the $20 million that came to do the middle school and the roof work was also to provide five, purchase five school buses for the division, because as you remember, we still continue to have buses that have quite a bit of age on them. We still have buses that are as old as 26-years-old and 25, 24, so a number of old buses. So here you see for 2021, one of the buses that will be purchased, so we've already purchased two, so we'll be purchasing one for fiscal year '21, '22, and then part of that, part of the amount there for fiscal year '23, so we'll be able to do that. We do still have on the CIP the cost to do HVAC for the gym. We don't have that project funded at this point, but we've left it on the CIP, so potentially when we're done with all these other major projects, it might be one that will be considered for funding. And also, the turf field replacement is on here at a cost of $407,000. We're taking a very good care of that turf field to get as much longevity as we can out of it, but at some point, they're going to have to do some replacement on the field. And then also, we have some projects on beyond 2025, just so the community knows that there are other projects that we'll need to tackle, just as we would in a house that we own. So this is the CIP that we're bringing forward to you this evening, approve it this evening. It will then be moved to the Planning Commission. They will then approve it or work on it as part of the city's presentation of the entire CIP, which is all of the city's project as well as the school division projects, and ultimately then we'll end up at City Council. So with that said, I'm recommending approval of the CIP as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve CIP?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments there?
When was the AC for the gym? What year was that?
Oh, I have bad news. It won't be while you're there, although we would love to keep you for additional years if you want to hang around with us, but we have it scheduled on fiscal year 2024, so it's quite out. But if we get it in there, we're going to invite you back to come watch a volleyball game, so you can enjoy a cool gym.
Thank you.
But very good question.
I must say, though, having played basketball, it's a competitive advantage to not have the AC, so.
It is.
It's actually nice not to have it for basketball purposes.
Thank you for taking the time to do extra work and getting the roof specialists out to save $700,000 for the project. I mean, those expenses will eventually come due, and we have to do a roof replacement. But to your point, being able to put $700,000 towards the modernization project is a big, because there's so much that we would like to do inside that new school. So, Pappas, thank you so much.
Mr. Pappas did quite a bit of legwork for that, so thank you.
That and the boiler.
Yeah.
Next up is, oh, I'm sorry, I haven't finished, have I? Next up is, oh, I'm sorry, I haven't finished, have I? I guess, Ms. Reimers, you can call for a vote.
Mr. Jordan.
Aye.
Mr. Trautman.
Aye.
Mr. Freeman.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler.
Aye.
Chair Carter.
Aye.
Motion passes five seconds.
Thank you. And next up, consideration of approval for proclamation for School Bus Safety Week and School Psychology Week. School Bus Safety Week, public transportation helps hundreds of Pecosin students arrive safely to and from school each day. Their design with safety measures including bright colors, stop sign arms, and everybody has seen those. The highest standards of school bus safety are maintained through rigorous driver training that we hear from Mr. Pappas each year. And certification requirements and school bus transportation employees should be recognized for their steadfast commitment to safety transporting Pecosin students. And School Psychologist Awareness Week, all children and youth can learn with proper support and have the unalienable right to education that meets their needs. Sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, so emotional development, prevention and early intervention, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. Children's mental health and resilience are directly related to their learning and development. Do I have a motion to approve the two proclamations?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Jordan.
Aye.
Mr. Trautman.
Aye.
Mr. Freeman.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler.
Aye.
Chair Carter.
Aye.
Motion passes five seconds.
Thank you. Communications, Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick us off, please?
Yes, just a reminder that the Pecosin Education Foundation is having one of their two major fundraisers on the 26th of October. They're going to have the race that day and give everybody a sense of where the money goes. We've received since 2010 over $300,000 in teacher and school grants. In addition to that, they've done $1,000 in student scholarships, so it's a great cause. So we'd love to see a bunch of people out there running or walking or simply just supporting the race, and you can get a free t-shirt just by supporting the race, so. Anyway, so hopefully we'll get a good turnout that day. Also, just a reminder to the community that the calendar survey is out there now. This is a survey that all the school divisions on the department are giving, and we open that survey on the 7th of October. It will close on October 21st, so we're encouraging parents, students, and staff to take that calendar. And if you go right to the front page of our website, you will see it, but our parents have been emailed the survey as well as all of our faculty and staff, and students can get right through the website as well. Those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Jamie.
Alrighty, so for the primary school, Pecosin Primary School teachers enjoyed meeting with parents at our back-to-school nights at the end of September. Teachers presented important information about grade level and classroom expectations. Parents also held, had the chance to visit the library for our Fall Book Fair. Our students loved the Fall Book Fair and experience this year as well. Students were excited to add books to their personal library collections. Our students were also treated to a performance of Goldilocks performed by the Virginia Opera at our PTO. The opera performance had a spin on the positive behavior and kindness, perfect for kicking off October's theme of kindness to all. October is anti-bullying month, and at Pecosin Primary School, students and staff have a schedule of themed dress-up days and activities in classrooms to promote active kindness. Our first-grade students have the chance to visit with Pecosin firefighters last week for fire prevention tips, and our first graders will visit Yorktown this week for their first field trip. We look forward to Read-A-Thon PTO fundraiser beginning next week, along with the exciting reading activities planned to encourage reading. Because in elementary school, PES kicked off October as National Bullying Prevention Month with the school-wide assembly. During National Bullying Prevention Kickoff Assembly, PES students focused on what makes a good student a good friend or a good person. We discussed the importance of being an upstander and against disrespect of all forms. We agreed to speak up and speak out to keep PES bully-free. Every Wednesday in October is a spirit day where student and staff will wear PES spirit wear and other styles of colors and clothes to demonstrate our stand against bullying and emphasize we are united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. We had a terrific book fair earlier this month and had a record-breaking attendance of parents during our family book fair night, which excites us to see so many parents supporting reading without the school. Releasing monarch butterflies in PES has become a part of the experience. Once again, Susan Northcott, a past teacher at PES, is volunteering her time with the staff and students to provide the opportunity to observe the life cycle of this beautiful creature and learn the delicate balances that must occur in the environment for the monarch butterfly to make its flight to Mexico. This coming Thursday, we will participate in the yearly Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill. Be sure to ask your student on Thursday to tell you about the drop, cover up, and hold on. Because in middle school, PMS is all-in, as we saw earlier. PMS launched this year's all-in movement on October 4th, signifying the understanding that creating a safe and caring learning environment requires that we are all invested, all involved, and all interested in our school community and each and each other because we are all in this together. Every student and staff member received an all-in bracelet to wear, signifying our commitment to being all-in all the time as a reminder to be our very best self every day. Our school counselors have been busy setting up students for success through classroom lessons. All sixth-grade students participated in the classroom counseling lessons entitled "Making the Most of Middle School." Students viewed a Tips and Tricks video made by previous PMS students who shared personal recommendations for managing lockers, homework, staying organized, peer relationships, and extracurricular involvement. Sixth-grade students completed the lesson by creating a craft for their lockers with at least one goal or positive message to inspire them throughout the year. Seventh-grade students participated in lessons on conflict resolution. Students learned the concepts that include intention, conflict, compromise, resolution, and to advocate. The students' favorite part of the lesson was spinning the Wheel of Conflict and role-playing conflicts and resolutions. Our eighth-grade students participated in lessons called "The Portrait of a Graduate." These lessons ensured that all students understand the importance depicted in the portrait of a graduate framework and know how academic career plans they create this year will be a valuable tool in helping them map out their future. Because in middle school, we'll celebrate Red Ribbon Week, October 21st through 25th, through drug prevention, education, and by participating in spirit days that are designated to promote a drug-free school. This year's theme will be Send a Message and Stay Drug-Free. Because in high school, PHS is charging ahead with lots of exciting events happening both in and outside of the classrooms. Last week, the homecoming festivities continued to bring our school together. Thanks to the tremendous coordination and our student leaders and faculty, the homecoming events were a success, with spirit days, hall decorating, a spirited parade, and an annual dance. Additionally, we kicked off our bullying prevention activities with daily reminders of kindness. Throughout the month of October, our students will continue to participate in a variety of activities, including Kindness Week, National Unity Day, Diversity Dialogue Day, as well as our first bullseye meeting at the end of October, all experiences that we will build upon throughout the year. Academically, our students began our year of three of the Veterans, Pecosin Veterans Project as students in AP US History interviewed our newest group of United States veterans. Our marketing students learned about the operations at the Virginia State Fair while students in forensics observed proceeding, the proceedings at York County Courthouse, just a taste of all of the learning happening throughout the building. Additionally, our counseling departments facilitated a post, an overview of post-secondary options for all 12th-grade students and administered the PSAT test for all 10th-grade students as well as interested 9th and 11th-grade students. Senior meetings are currently underway, and the counselors will be providing valuable classroom lessons in resilience for all 9th-grade students early November. We thank all of our families who participated in tonight's Family Conference Night, and we look forward to having more opportunities to engage with our families throughout the year. Be on the lookout for more incredible accomplishment from our students as they continue to work together to make a positive impact in our school and our community. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Jordan.
Wow, it's hard to follow Jamie after that. Our schools are doing such great things. I really enjoyed the presentation by the middle school and the all-in approach that they had. It seems like that's taken off, and it'll help maybe change some kids' lives there. And that all-in approach was, I think, came about by Dabo Swinney, the head coach of Clemson Football Team. I always have parallels back to sports, but, you know, the foundation that he started is actually called all-in, so it's nice to see the middle school taking that approach. And thank you for the band. Keep it on moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trautman.
I agree. I like the band. That's fun. Second year, I've gotten a band, so we're going to keep wearing them, so that's awesome. Just as a reminder, because it's already been said twice, but two big surveys out, the Impact Aid, and I can't drive, you know, from a financial perspective how important that is, so please ask everybody who's listening in to get that report in. It does make a big difference in regards to the finance. Calendar survey, and it's a big topic that's coming out, so please make sure you get all that information in. Beyond that, congratulations to the high school, the Purple Star School. It's an exciting designation, and as a member of Langley Civic Leaders Association, we appreciate that engagement with the airmen and women that are here at Langley Air Force Base, and also thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Again, I'd like to congratulate all the award winners once again from the beginning at all-in program. Those videos are outstanding. They're very fun to make and watch for the students as well. I'd like to congratulate our football team on a three-game win streak. I'd also like to thank the parents who spoke tonight. Takes a lot of courage to come up and speak. So thank you for your participation. I think we need more community involvement sometimes. And for those y'all out there listening and in here, if you ever need, contact information, go to Google, type in Pecosin City Board. There's a lot of information there.
Ms. Sheeler.
Hey, I'd like to thank Taylor Jones for her message that there's no such thing as a small act of kindness, that it made her feel safe, and she was able to do well in school as a result of that, and then be a better citizen in the wider world, so good for her. I had the opportunity also to attend two events on behalf of the school board. One was the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank's annual gathering of folks to recognize how important their role is in our community. I'm always amazed that they are able to serve 9.8 million meals in a year to folks that are much, very much in need, and that includes 78,000 meals just here in Pecosin. That's 5.6% of Pecosin whose residents are food insecure. That's, that really, that really struck me as an amazing thing. They appreciate any donations that people, that folks have. They appreciate volunteer, volunteers that come in. As a matter of fact, they were able to encourage the 32,908 volunteer hours last year, which is really impressive. But they said that every $5 donation provides 20 meals, so that's pretty cool. And then, on a happy note, I was able to attend New Horizons Regional Education Center on behalf of our board and the New Horizons Regional Education Center School Board. I was able to attend the Workforce Innovation Award Ceremony in Portsmouth earlier this month. So I applauded Casey Robbins, who's the director of New Horizons, and his team, who were honored for workforce innovations in education, along with four other prestigious partners in the greater peninsula. So New Horizons' mission as a part of the Greater Peninsula Workforce Board is to provide specialized training and education for high school-age students for, from participating schools, of which Pecosin is one, from all over the peninsula, as well as youth and adults with disabilities. So they serve 1,500 public school students and another 1,200 adult learners annually. So each year, New Horizons partners with more and more local companies and industries to provide training and education that those industries specifically need. And this coming year, New Horizons expects to team up with 50 local businesses. That's 50 in this effort. So by taking part in directing these training goals, these employers and their future employees coming out of this training make the best possible match. It's really exciting to watch that program grow. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You kind of stole some of my comments because I was going to speak to Taylor Jones's comments about felt safe in the school. Excuse me. And I liked that she said it pushed her to be a better student and a better citizen, and I just really thought the all-in message was powerful, so I hope that resonates and catches on and moves throughout the system. Mr. Phillips, Ms. Wainwright, you will each receive follow-up communication, and I really appreciate you taking the time on behalf of the board to come out and to voice your comments and concerns, and we really appreciate that. Appreciate you doing so in a very courteous and respectful manner as well, so. Mr. Freeman's comment, I believe. We do encourage the public to come out and take advantage of the surveys that we send out and the questionnaires because the more information we have from the community, the more educated decisions that we can make on how to... Thank y'all very much. I appreciate that. And do we have any material for board review?
We do not this evening.
And with that, we will adjourn to the work session where we will discuss instructional data and board governance norms and...